Alright, everybody. Computer's telling us that it's now one o'clock, so we're gonna reconvene our board meeting, and we're going to be talking about cannabis today. We are so excited that you're here because we need to do this as a community, not just all over the place. So to be able to bring your voices today is really important. So thank you for taking your time to be here. I'm sure it's the first of many meetings that we'll be having. So I'm thinking I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Dave, who is going to get us rolling.
Thank you Chair Lovegren. And it doesn't look like Commissioner Waldem has joined yet, but he may be joining remotely. So if you see him pop up on the screen, he is doing that. So my name is Dave Menke, and I'm the county administrator. And I just want to start with a this day in history. And I have to credit Ryan Fendell, our IT manager, for pointing this out. Five years ago today was the ribbon cutting for this building. So welcome back. We're celebrating five years by having a cannabis meeting. Something something that was not on our radar when we built the building. So during the last two legislative sessions, the Minnesota Legislature has legalized adult use or recreational cannabis. The law is Minnesota statute three, four, two. And in the coming months, the State Office of Cannabis Management will adopt administrative rules which will fully implement the law. And as like most new laws, there are challenges, uncertainties, and potentially opportunities. Today is our first attempt to start to work through these challenges, uncertainties, and potential opportunities. All cities and townships generally have the same authority under the cannabis law. And you will likely want to have conversations with your attorneys, zoning administrators, clerks, and others to guide your decision making. The law also allows cities and townships to delegate registration authority to the county. Today's presentations are intended to provide a general overview and initiate the conversation rather than provide a roadmap. So there's still going to be a lot of work after today. We have three presenters for today's meeting. First up will be County Attorney Reese Frederickson. He will focus on understanding the law and what options are available to local governments. Next will be Land and Resources Manager Mike Gainer, who will discuss the zoning-related aspects of the law. And finally, County Auditor Treasurer Kelly Schroeder will review the registration options. And there are sign-in sheets in the back. If you haven't had a chance to do that, please do that before you leave today. And the PowerPoints that are used today will be posted on the county website. And so if you go to the county website tomorrow, to the date of this meeting is where you'll find them. And then specific to the county commissioners, this is your regular county board meeting. If you want to have conversation after the presentations to give any thought or direction, you certainly can do that. And Chair Lovegren, you can kind of feel that out as to how you want to conclude today. And then we do hope to have some time for questions. And to do that, we're gonna just spin this podium around so that audience members, if you have a question, you can come up. Because we want to be sure that the microphones are used so it can capture it for the recording and for Commissioner Waldem to hear. And then we'll still be up here as panelists and try to answer any questions as best we can. So with that, I would love to introduce County Attorney Reese Fredericks.
Oh, good afternoon. So I'm gonna talk about this cannabis law. I'll talk about it in general, and then I'll get into specifically more the local options. So this is a presentation. Most of it I gave before, so it might be a repeat to a couple of you in the audience, but it's better the second time around, I'm sure. There we go. Alright, so lots of viewpoints on cannabis legalization. Some people, it's, I think it's like their primary source in life. That's kind of what they're all about. Some people are anti marijuana. And then there's a lot of us in the middle who are like, I don't understand any of this. That's how I feel sometimes about this. Personally, it's I went through the law. It's 321 pages. Some of it's innovative, some of it makes sense, and then some of it is terrible and doesn't account for reality. So it's kind of a mixed bag. But my here. So what is our role as local jurisdictions in dealing with it? Did I? Maybe I did. Hold on. It's probably my fault. There we go. Oh, it's working. Alright. So the 2023 bill is 321 pages long. And I took a CLE with the person that actually wrote the bill. This is not one of the legislators, but this is actually the policy people that actually are the ones that tasked to write it. He started writing this about 10 years ago. So that's kind of how long this has been in the works. And it wasn't until the a political party had the trifecta that they were able to pass it so they could bring this bill forward. And so that's what we have. It was effective August 1, 2023. And as I mentioned, it is rather comprehensive. And it's comprehensive in that the bill addresses all these type of categories. There's just a variety of things in here. Licensing, criminal law, expungements, tribal jurisdiction, drug schedule changes. This is just a smattering of these topics. There's more. My focus today is I'm gonna have a very general overview of some of this, but then I'll talk about local options. Local options is really gonna be my focus. So that's just my caveat. Last time I gave this presentation, somebody asked me about DOT restrictions or something like that. And I said, well, no, that's 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 another standard. My my concern really is local. If you have other questions beyond this, the law is out there. You can ask me or ask your follow up with your attorney as well. So that's my caveat. It would take me six, seven, eight hours to fully go through this bill. So and I'm assuming you don't want to be here six, seven, eight hours. Okay, I'm not getting in the weeds, so to speak. Alright. One person got it. Thank you. Thank you for bit of a dry sense of humor, but thank you for acknowledging that. I appreciate it. Alright, so the like a lot of laws, it's a balancing of policy. So we have a bunch of policies. I took this from the person that wrote this bill. But the law looks at safety of products, labeling, things like that. They look at the black market and try to prevent the black market. We'll talk a little bit about that in a bit. Impact on communities, accessibility to minors, the role of big marijuana, we'll talk about that. Role of medical companies, road safety, employment, barriers to entry. So there's so many policy balancing points here. Obviously, as a person in law enforcement, my concern, of course, is public safety, traffic safety. What concerned me was, you know, Colorado's had legalization for about 10 years now. And if you want to see some interesting data, look up what their statistics are. I mean, so criminal vehicular fatalities have tripled. One statistic was 140%. One was a tripling effect. Obviously, these are cases where there's a homicide due to being under the influence. I just finished a criminal vehicle homicide trial last month that involved alcohol though. But I can tell you that I don't want to see people go through that ever again. I don't want to go through that again. Seeing victims and victims' families, and even the first responders who showed up to that scene. It's something that weighs on my mind. So there's a public safety aspect. Colorado's found that there's been a tripling of access by minors to these products. Colorado's passed a lot of laws to prevent it from people from under 21 to access the products, but nothing's helped there. That's just kind of the reality of it. It's in the home. Children five that ages of 20 have access to it now. DWIs have tripled when it's just specifically marijuana. It's got that. Poly drug substance use has tripled too. And so statistics on that are all alarming from a law enforcement perspective. But that's that's just my take on that. Obviously, there's a, you know, you balance that against what's the economic development interest here, which is rather significant. I can give you just kind of a personal example. I know when the low potency edibles law came into effect in 2022, they allowed breweries to manufacture cannabis edibles and drinks. And I went up to a brewery up in Duluth just after that law passed and was looking at the selection of beers. And on the bottom right corner were two drinks. One was a THC drink, one was CBD drink. And I thought, well, do people actually go to a brewery and consume these products? Sure enough, they do, because I came back three months later, they had three THC drinks, two CBD drinks, and then they made a THC/CBD drink that you could actually drink on site. Couple months later, I went back and this brewery, they have a brewery, they have a parking lot, and then they have the building where they manufacture the beer. They turned part of that building into a retail space for THC only. So a lounge decorated it fully. I don't know if you call it like post contemporary weed. I don't know what the style was, but it was it was different. So I went in there because I was curious. And they had coolers with their product lines, their product lines that expanded. They had five THC drinks. They had a new line of 10-milligram drinks that they had a different branding. They manufactured gummies. We had three different lines of gummies. And then they showcased all their other products from other local distributors. They showcased the farmer where they got their materials from. So really, it grew by a lot. And the lounge was full of people. And they had a bartender who was kind of, I guess, like a sommelier with respect to THC products and could tell you like the flavor notes of some of the beverages and things like that. But yeah, I was standing there and three women who were probably about 65 or older walked in and walked up to the bartender and said, we've never had marijuana. Where do we start? I did a double take. And I was like, wow, okay. But yeah, so that's it's out there. There is an economic reality to it as well. So in general terms, what does legalization mean? It doesn't mean like kind of cross-the-board legalization. There are limits still, but this is what it means. So a person 21 or older may use, possess, transport cannabis paraphernalia. You may possess two ounces or less of cannabis flower in a public place. Two ounces is kind of a significant amount. You may possess two pounds or less of cannabis flower in your residence. You may possess or transport eight grams or less of adult-use concentrate cannabis concentrate. Possess, transport edible products, 800 milligrams or less of THC. You may give away cannabis flower and products in an amount that is legal for a person possessing product in public. So you can give somebody two ounces of marijuana if you want, who's 21 and older of course. You may use cannabis flower and products in private areas and cultivate up to eight cannabis products in your home, which for fewer must maybe mature flowering plants. The rest cannot be. So anything outside these limits is still illegal. And there are different, I'm not gonna get into them, but there are different crimes and penalties that deal with that. And a lot of it has to deal with too, if you're doing stuff in excess of this, you need a license from the government. That's kind of what makes it illegal. So as of August 1, 2023, where can you smoke marijuana? Well, yes, you can do on the sidewalk. I put asterisk against that because we have a public use ordinance now. But without that public use ordinance, you can smoke on a sidewalk, smoke outside a bar or restaurant, out in public. Indoor spaces, no, indoor public spaces. The same, the Clean Indoor Air Act applies to marijuana as well. Transportation vehicles and facilities like, you know, bus stations, things like that. Light one up in the airport, can't do that. In workplaces and your vehicle, no, no, you cannot smoke while you're driving your vehicle. Location where a minor can inhale, no. Inside rental units, maybe. I think there's some discretion allowed on that. Still up for debate. And of course, in a public or charter school or any of its facilities, obviously not. So as I said, this law is rather comprehensive. And what it's done is it's created licenses. So you have to get a license from the government with respect to going into a cannabis business. And there are 16 different licenses that you can get. And the way they've done these licenses or micro businesses, a Maisel business, which is kind of in the middle, manufacturer, they're trying to make it so that there's barriers of entry for a lot of people. So if you are somebody that's not well-funded, you can still get in and get a license for a micro business. I think what they found out when they did medical marijuana was that two companies really had the monopoly in Minnesota, and they really didn't want that. And so they wanted to encourage businesses to start from the ground up. So that's why you see so many of these licenses. There are 16 of them. Three of these are really retail licenses. And I call that out because some of the regulations that a local government can do are retail only. So obviously cannabis retailer is one, and the other two are cannabis micro business with a retail sales endorsement, or a cannabis Maisel business with a retail sales endorsement. So three retailers out of the 16 licenses. So just keep that in mind as we talk about this. When I was going through this law, this quote came up for me. So I think this is kind of a good way to categorize some of this. We have the known knowns, which is pretty much the law. We have, these are the things that we know. There are things that are known unknowns. So we know about them, but we don't know what's gonna happen. And then there are the unknown unknowns. So I think the people that wrote the law actually recognized this and knew that there were some big holes in this. So this is still a developing story. So with that in mind, let's get into the local regulations. So the state law, what it does is it really takes a lot of power out of the jurisdictions of the counties, the cities, the townships, and retains a lot of that power for the state. And person that wrote the law, he stated that the reason they did this was because they studied other states that did regulation. And they found that these places where they allowed local governments to opt in or opt out of these type of laws, they found that there are black markets that were created. And they wanted to avoid that. And they also wanted to make it so that more people could actually enter this industry. So you're gonna see a lot of don'ts, what you can do as a local government. So you may not prohibit the possession or transportation or use of cannabis, other than if you want a local public use ordinance. May not prohibit the establishment of a licensed cannabis business. I put a little asterisk there because there's some zoning regulations that you can do. But overall, that's the absolute bar. You cannot prohibit that. And you may not impose a cannabis-specific tax. And again, just our caveat, I didn't write this law. So I'm just kind of going over it. I see a few upset faces, but don't blame me after this. But what can you do? Well, you can adopt reasonable restrictions on time, place, and manner of operation of a cannabis business. But the law also again emphasizes that you can't prevent these businesses. You can adopt these restrictions, but they can't restrict or they can't be such a prohibit prohibit these businesses. Cannabis business cannot be licensed if it doesn't meet local zoning regulations. So you can have these local zoning regulations. Business doesn't meet that, then you can't, then you don't have to license it. I should say, you don't have to register it. If a local government doesn't register that business, the state can't license it unless it's approved by the local authorities. And with zoning operation, you may prohibit the operation of cannabis businesses within 1,000 feet of a school, 500 feet of a daycare residential treatment facility, or an attraction with a public park used by minors. More things that you can do by ordinance, you can limit the number of licensed retailers. Again, I'm gonna highlight that word retail. As I talked about earlier, there are three licenses that fall under that retail, not the rest of them, to no fewer than one registration for every 12,500 residents. I believe Kelly's gonna dig more into that for you in her presentation. And the law says that if you're a local government, you have a complaint about a cannabis or hemp business because of a failure with zoning regulations, things like that, you can submit that complaint up to this office of cannabis management, and they're supposed to give that complaint priority if it comes directly from a local Alright, so there's registration requirements. I think Kelly, you're covering that too? Really? Bummer. Okay. So there are various fees with that. Local governments may issue registrations. Issues registrations if criteria criteria is met. You have to do compliance checks, which are much like alcohol. And you may suspend or cancel registration for noncompliance. And if registration is canceled or suspended, you cannot operate that business. And then it goes to the Office of Cannabis Management too with regard to the license. Another thing that you're allowed to do is to pass a local interim ban. Basically, what that means is that you can prohibit cannabis businesses, so general category of businesses, until January 1, 2025, which right now are halfway through the year. So that's coming up quick. But some jurisdictions are doing this. And the purpose of this is to conduct the study and consider those reasonable restrictions. And the Office of Cannabis Management is supposed to come out with reasonable restrictions or come out with model zoning ordinance language. I haven't seen that yet.
Reese?
Yeah.
So if you do that, does that start a timeline for a process? Or does it just end at the date? Like if you're gonna, that mean you have to, you're trying to decide what you're gonna do to that interim meeting? We're gonna do something, and if we don't meet it, this goes away?
Yeah. Yeah. So that January 1 is the deadline on that. So it would just restrict any businesses between now and January 1. And obviously, there's some grandfathering into because some places around here sell those low potency drinks and edibles.
Thank you.
Yeah. Regulation possibilities. There's a cannabis event that's like a four-day, up to a four-day event that you can hold around surrounding cannabis. So there's a possibility of regulation. So if somebody inks a deal with Snoop Dogg or something, then you can come in and maybe regulate that a little bit. My jokes are just failing today.
I got it.
I'm trying. Trying to keep it interesting. You may adopt a petty misdemeanor ordinance, prohibiting cannabis use in public. And Pine County has done that. And of course, that is for the Pine County areas that we cover, wouldn't cover individual cities and such. Taxes, always a popular topic with respect to this. So our government's gonna be rolling in the green. If consumers are rolling green, I So state sales tax applies. Cannabis is not considered a food. There's a general local sales tax, if we have one, that applies. And then there's a GRT, that's a grocery receipts tax. So on top of all that, the state takes 10% of that retail sales for an additional tax. And of course, local jurisdictions are prohibited from making their own cannabis-specific tax. So with respect to the money, of course, 80% of it goes to the state general fund. And 20% of the GRT goes to just the local government cannabis aid account. And so what does that mean? So of that 20% of the GRT, 50% goes to counties, 50% goes to cities. And when it comes to the counties, 20% is distributed equally among the counties. So Pine County gets a 1/87th share of whatever that amount is. And then 80% is distributed proportionally among counties based on the number of cannabis businesses in the county. And so if there's, I don't know, 3,000 businesses in the state of Minnesota, we have three in Pine County, we get three 3,000s or 1,000s of a share. The states are, the cities are not so well situated. They have to actually have a cannabis business before they even get any money distributed from this. And if you think, I did the calculation. So in 2027, Department of Revenue is predicting that there's gonna be $110 million in state taxes from this. And that includes state, that includes GRT of that. 17 million GRT goes to this cannabis aid fund. You split that in half, and then you take 20% of that half, divide or multiply by one out of 87ths. Pine County at minimum gets $19,940. So not a lot of money when it comes actually comes down to it for arguably what could be some of the social ills that are caused by this. And I mentioned my criminal vehicle homicide case that I had a couple of weeks ago. I spent a lot more than $19,000 trying that case. So they put some grant funds in the law, possible source for local funds, $10 million 2025 for local tribal health departments, $5 million for youth education grants, $2 million grants for pregnant breastfeeding individuals, $6 million for employment economic development, $10 million between 2024 and 2025 for DRE training, which I don't know if the sheriff's office is gonna do that. Are you having DREs? Got one? Okay.
Yeah, we do that.
Yeah. And if those of you don't know, DRE is a drug recognition expert. This person, if you get pulled over and you're suspected of being under the influence, that's the person you call to see if it's you're under the influence of controlled substance. 1.5 million for treatment courts in '24 and '25. Employment, law does not change anything with respect to CDL holders. You're still governed by federal law. Federal law says absolutely no marijuana. Public safety employees who carry a firearm cannot use marijuana. So fortunately for Jeff, his crew is out of this law. And employees not affected by this law as well. Anybody called a safety-sensitive position, peace officers, firefighters, any positions funded by a federal grant. So I have a victim services coordinator in my office. She's funded by a federal grant. She cannot touch marijuana under this law. Physicians require testing of a job applicant or employee for cannabis. Of course, CDL, we talked about that. And any position with face-to-face care, training, education, supervision, consultation, medical assistance to children. So that's really kind of Becky Foss's crew, the HHS crew. So not a lot of county employees actually are affected by this. And obviously, some employer considerations, collective bargaining and things like that, use possession at work, so policies. And then tribes. So interesting thing about this law is it recognizes that tribes have a sovereign right to regulate the cannabis industry. And so they may enter a compact with the state. The whole compact is just to resolve jurisdictional issues is the intent. They're not subject to that 10% GRT if their sales are made in Indian country only. Indian country is the term that they use in the law. It's a federal definition. They may enter a tax agreement with the state to share sales tax, share GRT, if they're off reservation retail sales, and off reservation is the term that they use in the law as well. Not subject to state licensing program without an agreement with the state. So tribes obviously have a very significant first mover advantage in under this law. And I know at least one tribe up north, law was inked on August 1, 2000, or it began August 1, 2023. And I mean, they were ready to open the dispensary that day. Unknowns with the law. So like I said, unknown unknowns or known unknowns, workload impact, attorney's office, like I said, some of this is really still illegal. So we've got a whole new set of criminal penalties with this sheriff's office, HHS, obviously zoning and licensing, we talked about that. What about substance use among children, public safety, treatment needs? The list could go on. There's some things I brainstormed. Now, recently, a 2024 bill, they amended and added to the marijuana law. And they wanted to create more early mover advantages. And they call this group social equity applicants. And it includes people who've had a prior marijuana conviction. So if you broke the law, you get a early mover advantage for social equity to apply for a license. People in areas of poverty, they want to encourage more open business for everyone else. And veterans were added too. So maybe myself, Dave, and Steve, we could have a marijuana idea. Let me know. We can get an early license on that. I'm joking. That's very quiet, this group. Social equity ownership change. So you don't have to be 100% owner to be social equity as long as 65% are owned by social equity applicants. And then they expanded some of the Office of Cannabis Management consumer safety powers, including recalls, regulation authority, and packaging requirements. And we expect, I think Dave mentioned, there's some rulemaking that's gonna be coming up here soon too. And we expect, I think Dave mentioned, there's some rulemaking that's gonna be coming up here soon too. All right, that's my spiel on that, so turn it over, who's next?
Hi, everyone, I'm Mike Gaynor, your Pine County Land and Resources Manager. It's good to see so many folks from the townships and from the cities out here. I'm here to talk about zoning and how it relates to the regulation of cannabis production and retail operations in Pine County. Reece and Kelly are covering more about what we can do, what actions we can and cannot take to regulate cannabis. I'm gonna be talking more about the tools we might use to handle this regulation. So this is just a quick outline, the commissioners with advice from staff are going to have to determine whether we should regulate cannabis by adding to our existing zoning ordinances, by passing a new cannabis specific ordinance, or some combination of both. I wanted to talk about how zoning might be handled by the two sides of cannabis production and retail sales of cannabis products. And I wanted to touch on a couple of other areas and issues. So here are a list of the existing zoning and zoning adjacent ordinances that our department deals with. Shoreland management, non-shoreland zoning, floodplain subdivision, septic and solid waste. Of these six, the two where cannabis regulation would most logically play a role are the shoreland and non-shoreland zoning ordinances. These ordinances set up different zoning districts where different types of development, residential or business or agricultural, are encouraged. And we list permitted and conditional uses for each of these districts. It's worth emphasizing that under our current ordinances, there is no distinguishing a retail cannabis business from any other retail business. While due to the nature of a cannabis grow operation, that doesn't fall neatly into any of our categories of cropland agriculture or value-added agriculture uses. And so as you can see from this map of the shoreland areas, while a good deal of life in Pine County revolved around our waterways, what the DNR and our ordinance define as shoreland, a thousand feet from a lake, three hundred feet from a river, actually covers a relatively small percentage of the landmass of Pine County. Our shoreland rules are guided by the DNR and are meant to preserve those waterways. So those rules already include strong restrictions on agriculture, industry, and retail businesses. The rules make it unlikely that shoreland is gonna be an area targeted by growers of cannabis production. Now, when we're talking about areas outside of the shoreland, it seems likely that cannabis producers will be more interested in agricultural township areas where cannabis retailers will want to be located in higher density and higher traffic municipal areas. But once again, from the county's perspective, our non-shoreland zoning ordinance covers a relatively small portion of the county. Most of, most townships and cities regulate their own zoning out of the shoreland. With just the four townships, Carrick, New Doce, Nickerson and Pine Lake, and three municipalities for Park Denim and Carrick, choosing to have the county administrate their zoning. So any cannabis-related changes we would make to this ordinance would cover just those areas and would not affect any of these other townships or cities. So what is the best way to take advantage of this opportunity to take, to create some rules around cannabis in Pine County? As Reese noted earlier, we can put restrictions on the time, place, and manner of a cannabis business and set standards related to odor, security, lighting, and traffic management. The restrictions can include prohibiting a cannabis or hemp business within a thousand feet of a school, five hundred feet of a daycare, residential treatment facility, public park, field, or playground. Well, I'll tell you that when I was recently working with Pine City and we heard about these distant regulations, I mapped it out, and there were just a handful of addresses that aren't within shouting distance of a school, park, or daycare in towns. So. See, so we'll have some limited power under the Minnesota law to set some potential restrictions. The question here is, should the county regulate cannabis only under the existing zoning tools that we have affecting those limited areas that we discussed earlier? Or should we create a new countywide ordinance? In our list of ordinances earlier, we referred to the solid waste ordinance, which has a limited focus, but covers more of the county as a whole. An ordinance with that kind of focus and that kind of scope could be an effective instrument for handling our new cannabis-related businesses. So I've talked a bit about retail cannabis sales, but wanted to talk, discuss production a bit more. When we talk about cannabis production, we want to be aware that any facility wanting to grow and produce cannabis at scale will generally want to have an indoor greenhouse type facility for temperature control and will have roll lights on, as I understand it, generally eighteen hours a day. They'll also be required to have security arrangements approved by the state. And besides these, safety, traffic, aside safety, traffic and odor can be neighborhood concerns as well. Because of these features of the business, they end up being a bit of a hybrid between agricultural and industrial. So we have the option of adding cannabis production as a use under the existing shoreline and zoning ordinances or, and/or through a new ordinance. Another question we'll have to address is if and when we can regulate cannabis, is how do we permit it? The tools we have for permitting are conditional use, interim use, and administrative. And the conditional use are approved by the zoning board after a public hearing, as are the interim use permits. The difference between the conditional use permit and the interim use is that the conditional use continues with the property but never expires, whereas the interim use continues until the set date or sale of the property. And administrative permit would be reviewed and approved and if or denied by staff without public comment or input and continues until the date or until the sale of the property. And although this will, we have to be something that the board decides, and we have to give us, do some more research on this to give you good information on what options may be best. But the fact that the interim use permit has a public hearing option and zoning board input and also limits the use to the current owner makes this an attractive choice. I just wanted to note that there are samples of existing regulations for different jurisdictions in the Association of Minnesota Counties Guide to Cannabis Planning and Zoning, which is these regulations from other states covering all of these topics, odor, security, lighting, traffic management, wastewater, solid waste, and temporary cannabis events. It's worth a read, and we as staff will be studying all of these in detail to determine our options here as we plot a course forward. Finally, I just wanted to talk about something, or something that came up at the last meeting of our work group, which relates to what Reese was talking about earlier with the unknown unknowns. And it's an indication that even as we try to establish common sense regulations based on these new state laws, the legal ground under our feet keeps shifting. In this case, a group of home growers of cannabis are suing the state saying that under the Minnesota State Constitution, they can sell the marijuana they grow without any license at all. And in fact, there it is, under the Minnesota State Constitution, Article thirteen, Section seven, any person may sell or peddle the products of the farm or garden occupied and cultivated by him without obtaining a license therefore. So this is a case that's in the courts right now. We don't know where this case will go or when it will be decided, but it seems likely that it will be the last time that we'll have to pivot because of new direction from the state or changes that come to us through the courses. Thank you.
All right, so Kelly Schroeder, County Auditor Treasurer, I think I recognize most of you in this room. But I am going to talk about the registration piece of it, so my office does like liquor licensing, tobacco licensing, that type of stuff. And so this is a piece that potentially will be something that my office interfaces with. And so the one difference really is that we're not licensing these businesses. The only part of the, the law that allows us to do something is to register them. And we, the statute actually does require local governments or county governments to register these businesses. So that is going to be a task for everyone in this room to decide how we want to do that. We can charge a registration fee, Reese had noted what those registration fees could be. I feel like it's a little bit of semantics that everybody's very clear, it's not a license, it's not an application fee, it's a registration fee. So I don't, the state seems very worried about the semantics of it, but I slip once in a while. And then Reese pointed out as well, this registration piece only applies to the retail type businesses. So if we, it doesn't focus anything on the production or manufacturing of the products and things like that, so only the retail. Again, this applies to, and who's going to be doing this registration? The county will be doing it, cities, townships can do it. Cities and townships can choose to delegate to the county should you wish. And so that's something we're gonna talk about of what that would look like. Reese also mentioned this, but we're gonna talk about it quite a bit here, is that you must allow within your jurisdiction at least one retail business per twelve thousand five hundred people. So that, that is, you have to allow that, but you could be less restrictive than that, you could say, take out as many as wanna come, or you could say, well, we'll take one for every five thousand people, because then you'd be having more. So we can choose to be less restrictive than that, but we have to at least allow one per twelve thousand five hundred. Those limits are set in ordinance, so I think if, if we're going to have any sort of limit, we will have to have standalone ordinance regarding cannabis. And if the city and town chooses to do their own registration, then you yourself has that also restriction of one for every twelve thousand five hundred. So if the county has one for every twelve thousand five hundred, it doesn't take away your right to have one in your township or city as well, because we're all under twelve thousand five hundred, all our townships and cities. We could have a lot of licenses.
You could have thirty, thirty township.
Or forty seven with cities and townships. So how those actually would work with knowing there's that dance between the county and cities and townships. So Pine County, if we had an ordinance limiting that we would allow one business per the twelve thousand five hundred, so we said, just do, you know, the minute, we don't want as many business, you know, we don't want, we don't want a free-for-all, so we want to limit it to the one through twelve thousand five hundred. So looking at our population, the calculation comes out to that would be three businesses counting one. And so when we, if that's what Pine County's doing, it when it comes down to you guys, again, all of our cities and townships are under that twelve thousand five hundred population. So here's some examples of how that could look, if city A, I didn't want to name names. If, if city A decides, okay, great, the county's doing that, but we also want to, to register our businesses and have it, we want to have an ordinance that allows, that only allows the one in our city. But we want to be able to have the one in our city. So they have an ordinance and that says, okay, in our city, we'll have one per twelve thousand five hundred people, so we'll have one business in our city. And let's say in this world, the county already has three registered businesses. That doesn't prevent you as the city then from having your one either. It doesn't, the numbers don't take away, it's not like a race of who gets, who gets the first ones, so it, it could multiply. City B says, I don't want anything to do with this whole marijuana thing, county, you do it. And how that would work is if the county, for example, has that registration of a max of three and the city's delegated to us, we already have the three and they aren't in your city or township, then a business would be not allowed in your city or township because our three registrations are used up. Or city C would choose to just do nothing. They're gonna not have an ordinance limiting it, and they're not going to delegate to the county. They do still have the responsibility under the statute to register the businesses, but that means any business that comes knocking on their door, they'd have to register. That meets, of course, the zoning requirements and those types of things.
Same for townships.
Correct, yep, cities and townships are interchangeable.
So then, I have one more question.
Yeah.
So let's say all forty seven districts say we want to have one facility. District, do we as a county then have to do anything? Or are we covered with them while doing the forty seven and covering the three that were allowed in our county? But let's say four townships and cities decided they want to do it, that's already three.
Right, and so their three don't take away from ours.
We'd still have to do the three?
Right. Yep.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks, Kelly.
Yeah. And then here's the next, the next option of, let's say Pine County says, we're, we're not gonna have a limit. Cities and townships, if you want to limit, you do it, otherwise, we're not gonna have a limit. So city or township A, again, they have an ordinance allowing the one per twelve thousand, so city A ends up with one business. City B delegates it to the county, so they're not having to register the business, the county's registering the business, but we can't prohibit the business as long as it meets zoning regulations and the other requirements. So the county's taking care of that registration. Or option C would be, they don't do an ordinance or delegate to the county. And so then that city or township is registering the businesses themselves, and they can't prohibit them, them, because they don't have a limit in their ordinance. So that is an overview, and it's a little, it gets a little wishy-washy in there as to how it works, but the big message is if a city or township wants to regulate theirs to how many they want, it doesn't take away from other areas. So if a city says, we want, you know, we're gonna be open doors, however many we want, and all of a sudden, there's forty cannabis businesses in that city or township, it doesn't prevent other cities and townships from having a limit, it's just in that one. Reese had mentioned this, but with doing that registration, we are required to do annual compliance checks. And so yes, it's very similar to what the liquor licenses are, making sure that they're checking age verifications, that their operational requirements are being met and that the limits of the types of products are being sold is correct. So that would be a requirement, if you're doing the registration, that you would be doing these compliance checks as well. All right, that is the end of my like, registration.
All right, thank you, and Kelly, before you sit down, I'm gonna turn this, so if you want to hold just that one. Didn't think about cannabis when we built the building, but we tried to account for other things. So just with the time we have left, knowing that we're probably not gonna be able to answer real specific questions about specific situations, we do have some time to open it up for general thoughts or comments, or if you have thoughts that you want to share with the commissioners as to what the county should or should not be considering, we can invite folks to come up and use the podium so we get the benefit of the microphone and the recording and Mr. Waldam can hear. But if you could state your name and your jurisdiction, I think that will be helpful too, so if anyone would want to start.
Hi there, I'm, I'm Shane Parr, City Council member from Willow River. You mentioned jurisdictions setting time limits for these, I mean, is that something we can? Might be a silly question, but can we set the only hours that these can be done in our jurisdictions to be between noon and six P M, so we don't have this stuff going on at night, or I mean, is that?
Mike, are you able to talk about?
I, I mean, it does say that we can limit the time, but I don't know exactly what that means.
I would think that it would be very similar to what we do with some of our other conditional use permits. Like at a campground, for example, we tell them.
Sure, yeah.
As long as it's reasonable.
Okay.
Has to be a reasonable restriction.
Right.
If you said, well, you can only be open one hour a day.
Right, 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 right.
I would think that you'd be able to say, you know, no sales after.
A certain time, yeah, okay, perfect, cool, thank you.
Questions, just because I, I'm gonna get back up, but. Reese. Say what? Oh. Gussie Krug, I'm a clerk with Sandstone Township. Okay, so my, my first question is, to Reese, now you were saying there were zoning restrictions that could be set up for cannabis, would be specific? Is there something specific that a township could do, like say, we just don't allow it here? So that doesn't sound like it's something that would be.
No, you, you cannot under state law prohibit cannabis businesses, but you can set up reasonable restrictions and.
So I know you were saying there's a zoning, there's a zoning qualifier in there, a zoning would not.
Yep, so it'd be time, place.
But I would, and like the use, because if you don't have a commercial zoning district that allows retail businesses, I don't know how.
The growing business would not fit in there if you're agricultural, right? It would still have to be allowed there.
Right, and that's, that's where Mike kind of brought up. Right. And that's, that's where Mike kind of brought up the point of where does it fit in your ordinance?
Okay.
Need to do some clarification with, is cannabis agricultural when it's thrown indoors with grow lights eighteen hours a day? Or is it industrial?
Your tomato inside? Yeah. Okay. Okay. And the other question, G R T, um, the G R T, since this is being done, basically the growth part of it in the township. So the township is going to be sharing it in any of that G R T money?
I think the law, I would have to go back to, I think the law is just the cities. Confirm that under, it's under statute three forty two.
Okay. And my last question then, is someone in the sheriff's office doing compliance checks then? Is that a regular thing like they do with twenty one with tobacco and with alcohol?
Yeah, yeah. Retail.
Retail. Thank you.
Thanks Les Orbus, Royalton Township. This is a specific question. The state is being regulated right now by point three percent and under. And I've heard many times, and I went and looked it up and I'm looking for more confirmation, that the federal law is also point three percent. So the state isn't out of its jurisdiction by mandating point three percent or less, same as federal government. That's the question I'm asking. Is that correct? Federal law is point three percent, state is point three three percent. So saying the federal law is the, or the federal government is is illegal. Letting the state pass this, this law at point three percent, even though the federal law is mandating pretty much the same thing. Is that correct?
That, I've never heard that question.
Good.
You have a point. Yeah, I guess I guess. But I'm.
Yeah, no, I get it. I get it. It's specific.
Oh, yeah, that's something I have to look into. I know there's, there's that conflict between federal law, which says still marijuana is illegal.
Yep.
And uh states, and we're up to twenty four now, Minnesota's the twenty third to pass.
Yep.
Have their state regulations and the federal law is saying, yeah, it's still illegal, but the Department of Justice is not going to enforce federal law. And the states unless it's in illicit operation and that's, that's it.
And that's, that's kind of what I read is they will come after it unless it goes bad, but otherwise it's we're following the state, not the federal government.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we're following. I mean, it's, it's a complicated path.
Yes, it's a very complicated thing. So, okay.
Uh, yeah, I know, like the medical marijuana industry kind of queued up a lot of what we're talking about too.
Yep.
And courts have pretty much come down on the side of states.
Yep.
When it comes to medical marijuana.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry, federal government, but we're going to go with this.
Perfect. Thank you.
But the point three percent.
Thank you.
Next.
That's a good question.
Good afternoon. Gary Valvota from Royalton Township. My question is our township is zoned agricultural slash residential. And any business that come in, they would have to come before us with a conditional or interim use question, you know, and and go before the board, I mean, go before the public for a public meeting and that. It's been brought up that maybe it's an agricultural product to grow. But I checked with the F S A Farm Service Agency and uh uh all kinds of nuts and fruits and vegetables and your traditional farm corn, oats, grains. All of that are, are subsidized, are uh covered by disaster relief. And you can buy crop insurance for it. But then I called them and I asked, what about marijuana? And they said, no, it's illegal. So if they don't recognize it as an agricultural product at the federal level. And I called the state agricultural and I never got an answer, of course. And and he lives in our neighborhood, but anyway. But I did, I, I, did you ever get an answer from him? You called? Yeah. So, but anyway, so my thing is, is can we go and have them apply for a permit and we judge them on an interim use? And have a public hearing because we don't feel it's agricultural.
You have to do what your ordinance says.
Our ordinance is agricultural residential.
It's a permitted use probably. So then it wouldn't be doing interns. And so if you're going to do an interim use, where in your list in your ordinance does it, are you putting it under as an interim use? Because your ordinance lists things that we're going to do interim use or conditional use permits for. And so does it say we're going to do those types of permits for industrial properties? Okay. And you're going to call it industrial?
We traditionally always, we've got some businesses in our thing and in our township. And of course, we had them come before, whether it's a detailing business, whether it's a livestock, uh, retail sales, you know, a sales barn type of thing, whether it's a winery, they came before us. But we feel this isn't agriculture. You know, if you wanted to start up farming, milk cows, do whatever, grain farm. If you want to build a house, you apply for the building permit or whatever, and that's it. And there's no public hearing. We, I am thinking that this isn't agriculture when it isn't a subsidized, it isn't a recognized legal crop by the federal government. And I don't know about the state, but the state isn't the one handing out or or recognizing this either that way. So can we draw them in? So that we have a public hearing and it would be the same as any other business that comes in. No, we don't have specific things identified. It's just that if they're not agriculture, they're not residential. They have to come before us and and apply.
Seem like that's a legal question of. Do when you tell them you're not an agricultural product.
Right.
Township attorney.
And and I, I've worked with the F S A. That, that's my, my determination.
It's an ordinance to say we go by F S A subsidized products only or something.
The, I think the, the, the answer to your question might never be resolved until you get a court case, right? It sounds like the best way to approach it is to look to your ordinance. And if you want to specially regulate marijuana production, retail sales, whatever, as an interim use, that you call it out in your ordinance.
But I thought we can't specifically do that as identifying that. But you know, for instance, in our township, we don't have any tobacco or alcohol sales. Can it be covered under that blanket so that it is not necessarily? I don't know.
Right. You can't prevent the businesses, but you regulate them.
Regulate. And like with, in the ordinance, you know, we put agricultural, residential. No, we didn't define agricultural. I'm, I, I was looking for the definition from the federal government, F S A. But did we define it? No. Uh, we've got a bunch of farmers around that could probably help us out with that definition, you know. But, 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 and that's changed, you know, from a dairy to a grain, all that.
So if you, it, it sounds like, and again, you want to talk to your town attorney.
Yep.
Whoever's going to defend you. But it sounds like if you put into your ordinance, these are agricultural uses. And then reference that federal, you know, law rule definition, anything else is not and is regulated this way, that might be a way to to maintain that control and require an interim use permit.
Through zoning.
Yep.
Yep. That was, that's it. My other thing wasn't, I was talking to Reese about that, you know, is, is the the, the Article six of the Constitution and and the supremacy clause, you know, are we forgetting that or what, you know? And I, I think about there's, there's half the room full here that had an oath to the Constitution that, that we take to heart, you know? But it seems like the state, and I know the state trifecta with the one party of that, but that's it.
Well, Denise Weiss, Royalton Township. Obviously we have some issues going on um and that we're trying to clear up uh within things. Uh, the one thing that I do want to question, um, we've covered a few things pretty good. Sounds like there's still a lot of gray areas. Um, but the one thing I do want to question is probably uh or more for a lawyer thing is the Fourteenth Amendment. And it's per the, per the, per the Constitution. And it states all persons born natural, naturalized in the United States are subject to judicial judicial. Therefore, our citizens of the United States and there of the United States where they reside. So we know we're all that, we're all citizens of the United States. But the next sentence, and this is fourteen, Amendment fourteen, section one. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person or life, liberty or property without due process of law or deny any person within his jurisdiction jurisdiction the equal protections of the law. Um, and I feel number one, that if you look at Colorado, you look at California, you look at Michigan, the citizens there got a chance to vote whether or not they wanted this in their communities. We have not had that opportunity uh in Minnesota to vote. And whether we want this in our community or not in general, because they are able to exclude it. Um, and we are being told that we, we lose that option. Number two, the equal protection, in my mind, or the way I kind of view that is if the cities and townships can exclude certain areas because they don't want it on their land, they don't want it in their area. Why can't townships do the same thing? Um, and to have laws rolled up in the, in the sense that we as communities have in some ways lost our ability, uh, doesn't seem like it falls under the Fourteenth Amendment that we are allowed the protection because this is federally illegal. If this was a legal product, start from the top down, then we could work at things. But we're being told that we have to break federal laws by allowing this in our communities. And that seems unfair to the citizens of the, of, of the state, of our area, that we have to go against the federal government to allow this. So I would hope that if there's ever a class action lawsuit, that we would be included in that to say, why are citizens being forced to break the federal law? We come from a military family. We come from strong lines where you follow federal guidelines.
And I think as Mike noted, there's already a lawsuit in progress based on the Minnesota Constitution.
And that's a little bit different, that one.
And that's not going to be the last.
Right.
There's a lot of, of, there's going to be litigation on this. Um, I guess today we're really trying to focus on the next month or two. If cities, counties, townships want to adopt moratoriums, want to adopt land use controls, want to adopt regulations or registration requirements, there's not a lot of time.
No. And the social equity group, I believe goes out July fifteenth through August fifteenth. So would you recommend that most townships hurry very quickly to adopt that ten day interim community? Or do they need the ten day? Can they just say, we need an interim ordinance until January first, twenty twenty five? That's what the law allows us. And they do not need to have that ten day notice now that we finally had this with the county. So I guess that's my question. Do we need the ten day notice? Or can they rule that we need more time to put uh guidelines in place? And that we would want pause this until January first, twenty twenty five.
And I, I can't recommend what you do for your community, but I mean, that's, that's up to you as a community leader to figure that out.
Right.
That option is out there and I, I think that involves, of course, it's an interim ban. It involves a public hearing. So you have to follow whatever no as requirements are with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Reese, did you say there was language out there or somebody creating language for that ordinance?
There's, there's uh examples out there that so, yeah, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel. I believe they've had a, a good example in, in a packet that.
Yeah, Sher, Sherburne County earlier today at their, or at the regular board meeting, I guess, I don't know what time it is today. But at their board meeting, uh, had an interim uh, a moratorium that they were considering. And so if you go to the Sherburne County website uh and look at their packet for today's meeting, uh, that material is in there. So um, I guess Chair Lovren, do you want to make some comments or wrap it up or have?
Question today on anything?
I think I'm good.
No, I'm good. I'm good. Good.
Again, I just want to thank everybody for being here. I think um that this is something that we need to do as a village and not individually. And so we just really appreciate your time. I know Pokagama, you said that you've already stepped forward and done some changes. Um, so just to be able to work on these things together is, is really huge. So again, thank you for being here and for your time today. I know it's valuable and we just really appreciate you. And so on that, we have a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Matt. A second, a second from Steve. Um, Debbie, can you do a roll call, please?
Just pick one, Mr. Holland.
Yes.
Mister two, Mr. Mar.
Hi.
Three, Chair Love. Four, Walden.
Yes.
Mister five, Mr. Lovren.
Hi.
Thank you.
Well, our meeting is adjourned for today. Um, and keep the questions coming so that we can do this together.